Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call and order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens caring to share their thoughts with us?
I see one hand raised. Looks like Finley. Give me just one second. I will promote you to panelist. Okay, once you begin to speak, your three minutes will start.
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Finley. I'm a resident of Kenmore. I'm speaking on behalf of the commitment by the City of Kenmore to comply with the Growth Management Act, specifically RCW 36.70A.070, and ensure, quote, "the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods," unquote. I'm expecting the Planning Commission, then the City Council, to comply with the GMA mandatory elements, which include the, quote, "preservation, improvement, and development of housing, including single-family residences," unquote. I assume you've read the GMA for yourselves and are not completely reliant on what staff tells you it says. But a reminder that the GMA specifies that cities, quote, "make adequate provisions for existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community," unquote. As in most things in life, the balance, the key is balance. There's a reason for zoning, as we've known it. It helps coordinate necessities like safety and the environmental infrastructure, sidewalks and crosswalks, bike lanes, stormwater runoff, tree preservation, to name a few. When population is packed in everywhere, the supporting infrastructures are missing. How is this equitable for the population that is purportedly being served? How does cramming a $750,000 duplex into an existing single-family zone alleviate the challenge of affordable housing? What will be the rent? How is this equitable for the population that is purportedly being served? Equitable for the population that is purportedly being served to tell them that they can live in any neighborhood in the city, but they'll have to choose that tiny house among all the established single-family homes? Of course, the more affluent neighborhoods in Kenmore with covenants scattered around our city will be shielded from any proposed zoning change. We can't touch those. How is this equitable for single-family neighborhoods without covenants? True, as staff told you, the City of Kenmore cannot put out a no vacancy sign, but we can accommodate growth through our current zoning that is equitable to residents with diverse life goals and desires across all income levels. Finally, I ask that you refrain overtly or covertly from the implication and mischaracterization that Kenmore residents who enjoy their chosen single-family neighborhoods and their own private backyards are rich, selfish, and greedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Rita, do we have any other, any other folks wanting to share comments?
I currently see no other hands raised.
Okay.
There goes one hand up.
Oh, there goes one. Okay.
If you'd like to give public comment, please go ahead and use the raised hand feature now, and then I can put you in queue. So it looks like Sophia Mann. I will promote you to panelist. And then, once you begin speaking, your three minutes will start. You can go ahead and unmute.
Okay, I'll start it all over again. So, good evening. My name is Sophia Mann, and I am a resident of Kenmore. I would like to start by saying that I support affordable housing. My family and my community would not be here if there were no affordable housing. However, we should have boundary that protects single-family property. I am against rezoning all residential to building duplexes and triplexes, multi-unit housing and/or apartment. We don't want wealthy domestic or foreign investor take over our single-resident Kenmore, single-resident neighborhood with all this multi-building duplex, triplexes, et cetera, that I mentioned about. The end result is no longer affordable housing for hard-working people like us, and also it will force elderly people out of their home because they can't afford it anymore if they put multimillion-dollar apartment in our neighborhood. So, the question that I would propose for the committee, we are living in a neighborhood that have covenant and private pool. So, how is Kenmore going to work with neighborhood that have HOA and covenants? Second, how would HOA and covenant be affected by housing by changing single-family zone? Third, what is the long-term effect of the rezoning all resident to multifamily unit duplexes and triplexes in the future? And fourth, how would the planning committee reach out to Kenmore resident about this rezoning issue to get more input from Kenmore resident? Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Any others, Rita, that have raised their hands? Any other folks?
I don't see any other hands raised right now.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of minutes from the October 5th Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I move that, without objection, the Planning Commission meeting minutes be approved.
A second.
I second it.
All right, moved and approved to, excuse me, moved and seconded to approve the October 5th meeting minutes. Any discussion on the motion there? Okay, hearing none, we will move to, move to, move to, I think, Dwight, you wanted that to be by sort of acclamation, right? Is that the?
That's right. If there's no objection, then it's automatically approved.
Right. So, we don't need, do we need to even do like a yay-nay voice vote then? Okay, so, we have it that meeting minutes are approved accordingly. So, our next agenda item is the housing element for missing middle housing. So invite Lori.
Mr. Chair, point of order, may I?
Sure, go ahead. Yep.
Our next meeting is scheduled on an election day night, and particularly, this election day or night is for our city. And I would, I believe that what the right thing to do in light of that would be to postpone our meeting one week.
Okay. Does anybody else have any feelings about that? We can, we can also address it towards the end of our meeting if we, if we want. But does anybody else have any thoughts or opinions about, about that?
I would support moving the meeting so that we can be engaged in the democratic process of watching election results come in and being with our community in that capacity.
Okay.
I would just want to consider Lori and Debbie's time and schedules as well in making this decision.
Well, that would be fine. However, I believe we have a greater, and I really respect Debbie and our staff's time, but I think it's very inappropriate for us to have a meeting where we are maybe asking for, or where our citizens should be having the ability to watch our commission on the night of an election results. And actually, the polls are open until 8:00 PM. So, I really, I really appreciate our staff's issues just as well as our own time. But I think the issue of public policy and doing the right thing in the electorate process is very important.
Okay. Yeah, Lori, go ahead. Can you address the?
Yeah. So, I totally appreciate where Commissioner Thompson is coming from. I would ask you to consider, rather than delaying it by a week, and Debbie and I have not talked about this, so she will want to weigh in as well. But on November 16th, we have already advertised for a community forum on housing. And for us to adequately prepare materials, it really would be helpful if we could meet that same week. Maybe not the night of the second, but maybe Wednesday, the third, so that we have time to get the information that we need out to the public so that the community forum on November 16th can be flawless. What can I say?
Okay. Is that meet Dwight, Tracy? Would that one-day delay work for?
Is Wednesday a better day for staff if we moved it to Wednesday?
It doesn't matter for me. I'm not sure about Debbie, so she'll have to weigh in.
Well, that, and I'm just concerned so you have enough time for what you need to do, as you rightly suggested.
Laurie, do you remember when the community forum is for the housing?
Well, the community forum on housing is the 16th.
Not for us.
The our listening session, I believe, is on November 1st.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't conflicting with something else. So, if the commission, if the commission wants to change the date, we would have to have the Planning Commission direction to cancel that November 2nd meeting and then set the date for a new meeting. And I would agree with Laurie that if we can not delay a week, if that Wednesday, there is a quorum, we can work around that.
And Rita might need to weigh in as well.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, I guess the proper motion is to officially cancel the meeting on election night and have a special meeting on the following day, Wednesday, I believe, is November 3rd. Am I, do I have the dates right? Staff, do I have the, okay, so that's my motion.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded to cancel the November 2nd meeting and have it on the Wednesday, November 3rd. Any discussion on that? Any further discussion on, on that?
I won't be able to attend on the 3rd, but otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I also will not be able to attend on the 3rd if it is moved.
Okay. Well, that leaves, and I know, I don't believe, Dennis, are you, I can't see if Dennis is, is Dennis, I don't see his.
He just got moved over from the panelist side, too.
Okay. How about you, Dennis? Can you, are you available on November 3rd?
Yes, I heard that part of the discussion. It just took a while to get put out as a panelist.
Okay. Okay, so by my count, then, we'll have five pending, which is a quorum. Obviously, four, four beats the minimum quorum. So, I think from, from that, from that standpoint, it looks like we could make that happen. Does anybody else have any known conflicts on the 3rd besides Suzanne and Nathan who do?
I do not. However, I am concerned about losing two valuable voices for that meeting, particularly when that's likely to be a very important meeting leading up to the community discussion. But I think if we can't be sure of having a full participation, we need to move to a different date or time.
Yeah.
Is this an appropriate time to discuss a potential different date and then an amendment to the motion?
Sure, it's, it's open for discussion. Yep.
How about that Thursday?
That's good. Okay, so Thursday, November, I believe that's the 4th, correct? Suzanne, Nathan, how does that, at least at the moment, look?
I don't know. I have to go and, and get my calendar. I don't know about that part of the week, but I'm usually pretty booked up, but I'll go get my calendar and look.
I believe I can make that date.
Okay.
And just so that I can think ahead while, while we're waiting for Suzanne. Laura, you said that there's something, or Debbie said that there's something on the 1st that would preclude us meeting on the 1st.
I believe so.
Correct.
It's a council meeting, I think, isn't it?
Are they meeting the first Monday that month?
I, I think it's a listening session for the American Rescue Plan Act money or about the pandemic.
Let Suzanne take a quick.
Yeah, it looks like I'm available that Thursday.
Okay, looks like, okay, it looks like we have, it looks like full participation on November 4th. So, did you want to, somebody want to make a, I guess, an amendment to the?
I'll just make a friendly amendment that I really meant November 4th.
Very gracious.
So, it has been moved and, and seconded with a friendly amendment that we switch our meeting, cancel the meeting on November 2nd and move it to Thursday, November 4th. So, Rita, why don't you go ahead and do a roll call vote for this one, please?
All righty. Commissioner Greathouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanazinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanderland?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Aye.
And Chair Orangeall?
Aye. Okay, that is our new date for our next meeting. Thank you for bringing that up. And that's a very valid and important point, I think, that you, that you brought up. So, thanks for, thanks for doing that. So, our next agenda item is the housing element for missing middle housing. So, invite Lori and Debbie to take her away.
Right. Well, good evening, everyone. Chair Orangeall and members of the Planning Commission. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to try to finish going through the scenarios for the various missing middle housing types. You'll see at the end of the memo in today's packet that we are recommending that we not proceed with discussions about tiny home villages. I think Commissioner Lutzis said, is this really missing middle? I think Commissioner Vanderland also asked this question, and after reflection, we think it is confusing, and so we would recommend that the discussion be deferred, although a conference of plan policy perhaps to consider the issue in the future might be appropriate. And once these scenarios are developed in their rough format, we are trying to come back at your next meeting with some development parameters for duplexes, triplexes, and maybe townhomes to give you a better sense of what, what these things might look like, what the form might be. Because this question of compatibility with existing neighborhoods has come up in all of your discussions. So, that is the goal at the meeting, which is now on November 4th. And then, the information from that meeting, the information from tonight's meeting, all will be part of the Community Forum on Housing, which is scheduled for regular meeting date, November 16th. And that will be a Zoom forum. We hope to have two or three breakout rooms to gather community input on a variety of topics. And also, on November 2nd, well, or I'm sorry, now November 4th, we'll also talk about your roles, where you want to be during that forum. And, and that will be an opportunity to get some early public input before you move ahead to future consideration of your recommendation on the missing middle housing types. That's the purpose, and that's why we're pushing to try to develop some scenarios and, and hope that the accompanying zoning information will make you feel more comfortable about what is being presented to the community.
Laurie, a question on the 16th. Will there be any kind of third-party facilitation to that? Or how are you, or are you, how are we going to manage that?
Yeah, so there is, we are having the consultant, PRR, who did our public participation plan, help us with the technical aspects of the meeting. I expect a PRR staff person will be welcoming people to the meeting and then directing them. It's kind of an open house format, but again, we haven't even met. We're doing that this week to talk about it because we don't quite know what we're presenting. So, we will be doing that, and then certainly, staff who's very familiar with the information will be helping with it, and commissioners, I hope, will attend and hear public comment. But again, PRR will be doing the technical facilitation of the meeting.
So, I have a low, just general question. This is an open house on our, for the commission? Or is this just a city event? I'm trying to understand which it is.
City event for the community. It is for people who are interested in missing middle housing. And we'll also probably talk about the vision statement, although that will be a lesser part of the conversation. It's really focused on housing. And it will be an opportunity for the public to react to what they've heard about missing middle housing so far.
So, just to be clear, so this is not meant to be at the level of a commission input like a hearing, correct?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, because what I was concerned about, just so I can, maybe what you guys can see what's going on in my brain, because that's not easily to, can see on Zoom. But, you know, if it was related to specific input for the commission, then I would have suggested that we got to figure out how we are going to spread out amongst all of the breakout groups so that we have, so that the citizens feel that they're getting equal time, no matter which group they're with. And so, that was my only thought. So, I'm glad to hear that it's not at the level of a commission hearing or a commission input, and that we're going to have another opportunity for that.
There certainly will be a formal public hearing. That won't happen likely until the spring. So, this is just an opportunity for the community to weigh in, gives, as I said, give their reactions to some of these concepts before you develop your primary recommendation, which would be what the subject of the public hearing would be. And again, on November 4th, we will be talking about commissioner participation, whether, and I don't know enough of the technical details, but I, my understanding is that you could float between rooms. You could be in a particular room if you had a particular interest and that kind of thing. So.
Well, thank you for addressing that. I just had my concerns about how the public would feel that we are listening to them.
Right.
Good point. Oh, Laura, I was just going to ask that, kind of follow up a little bit. I presume in this meeting, you're going to have with the, with the consultants that you'll sort of refine the, not only the format, but, you know, are there going to be prompts for people to, you know, to try to respond to? Or it's not just going to be come, come and talk about missing middle housing. It'll be a little more specific, I presume, direction or guidance, I should say, for, for the, the community who want, people who want to respond, right?
Well, certainly, there'll be information for them to react to. Yes, and we'll be advertising it, and we will have consecutive Spanish interpreter available. So, there will be one room for Spanish-speaking folks. And other things we've talked about are sort of the topics of the various rooms. But again, we haven't fleshed it out. Our big meeting is on this coming Wednesday, where we will have discussion about it.
Great. Okay, we'll look forward to hearing more on the, on the 4th. Great.
Well, if I may, Mark, so it will be clear, however the consultants do this, that those commissioners that are in the room are not there to respond to questions, et cetera, et cetera. That's not our role, correct?
I could answer that a couple of different ways. There's, this is not a time for the public to question commissioners on their positions, but I hope it will be in the format of a conversation. And so, if commissioners want to converse with participants, I don't know that you should shy away from that. Again, it's, it's a time to be with the community and listen to their perspectives. And if you have questions, I think you should feel free to ask those.
And, and that's fine. I just wanted to, so that the community is clear that no matter who of us are in which breakout group, we're not there to provide a position of a response on behalf of the commission. We're just there to listen and to ask questions just for more information from our public, our citizens. Do you understand what I mean?
I do. I, I think.
Thank you.
That, that's absolutely correct. I think there will be information given to attendees that it comes from the Planning Commission's development of these preliminary scenarios. So, I don't want to say there's no tie to the Planning Commission. They are actually things that you've discussed, and you may wish to, if you were comfortable, express a point of view, but I, it's not, this is not your final recommendation. This is, these are preliminary thoughts, and you're trying to just see how the public feels about it. Staff will be there to answer questions, presumably.
Thank you very much.
Hey, go ahead, Mike.
An observation, having been involved in several of these particularly Zoom-based meeting types before with meeting rooms, what are things that have worked well? Yet, and I've seen is when you set up the rooms so that they have some kind of tee-up for a particular question or questions, so people can be directed, or self-direct themselves into the room to which they have the most interest. That also allows the commissioners to, to be attending those places where they, they have particular interests. So, I know you're still in the planning stages, so I'm not going to expect you to have any response to that. But I offer that for you to be thinking about as you construct this. Some structure to this is, I think, important. Where I've seen it gone badly is where it's overstructured. So, it's a balance, and we'll leave that to you to, to figure out, but just wanted to share that input.
Thank you. Okay, so, see no further hands for questions. At your last meeting, we talked a lot about conversion of existing residences into duplexes and triplexes. And the commission's conclusion preliminarily is that that should be okay within a certain distance of our transit corridors, and, and the conclusion was that should be about one-quarter mile. And then, you asked me to get some information, and I have actually three pieces of information that I want to bring up tonight because I think they're relevant to the next step in our discussion, which is to talk about new duplexes and triplexes, not conversions, but new duplexes and triplexes. And those three pieces of information are, first of all, I heard from Brian Hampson, the Development Services Director, you had asked me what would an existing residence, what kind of changes would have to occur to that to allow a duplex or a triplex? So, I sent him an email, and he said the major changes would be firewalls and separate meters. It's possible that new front doors, landing stairs might be required. But he felt that it would be highly unlikely that an existing home would be converted to a duplex or triplex. But he felt that it would be highly unlikely that an existing home would be converted to a duplex or triplex, mainly because of the expenses with the new separate meters and installation of the firewalls. So new piece of information. Uh, the second informa- piece of information is that uh staff has spent uh time now looking at the issue of uh topography. Uh, there was a lot of, there were a lot of concerns raised about, well, are these areas of steep slopes? Uh, or not? Where, how does that relate to the transit? So we did some more investigation of that, and certainly there are some areas that would be difficult to expect at least a pedestrian to head to a bike or a transit corridor. If that is the primary motivation for the location for duplexes and triplexes. Um, the third piece of information uh is that our G I S consultant has given us now the capacity information, which we've been patiently waiting for in the area, both within the quarter mile and within the half mile of the transit corridors. And um so from that we went back and looked at the program and we have some additional conclusions that we would like you to think about as you're moving ahead to your new duplex-triplex discussion tonight. Um, the first of those is that we have been anticipating, given what we've heard about a concern about environmental issues for new units, that the R one and R four zones, which were in fact created to protect environmentally sensitive areas, are probably not the place to allow duplexes and triplexes. That in a way would preserve um those areas almost as uh critical area corridors. Certainly, the critical area rules apply apply to any property, whether it's R six, R twelve, R eighteen, R four, whatever, the rules still apply. But the city has acknowledged by creating those lower-density zones that these are areas that are in particular affected by steep slopes and R four wetlands and streams in R one. The second uh conclusion that we as staff came to is that restricting duplexes and triplexes to the quarter mile may not be the approach we would recommend. And the reason for that is that if you restrict it to a quarter mile, but then you take out property that is related to steeper slopes, there's very little left. And so what we would suggest is in areas where steep slopes are not as much a concern, uh, the commission consider going back to the half mile. So taking out some areas, expanding in other areas to the half mile uh watershed. And then the the con- third um consideration is that even with these changes, the number of units that would be created on vacant or redevelopable land are very small for the duplexes and triplexes. And so the question would be whether, given the small number of units, and I can looking for my piece of paper here where we did the rough calculation. So first of all, I don't think it would be appropriate to assume that a hun- if duplexes and triplexes were allowed, that every single vacant property or redevelopable property would build a duplex or a triplex. And I uh looked to see what a standard might be. What I can tell you is that in the work that Portland did for their missing middle housing, uh, they assumed that over a uh the twenty-year period of their plan, that twenty-five percent of those lots would build as a duplex or a triplex. Um, you could say fifty percent, you if you wanted to do the analysis at a hundred percent, you could do that. But if you use twenty-five percent and we only consider the quarter mile for vacant and redevelopable land, it would vary between twenty and forty units additional. If you look at half mile, it would vary between thirty-one and sixty-three. Even if you were to assume that every single one of those properties were to develop at a quarter mile, it would be seventy-six units. And a hundred and um seventy-six to a hundred and fifty-two, depending on duplex or triplex, and at a half mile, a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty. And that's assuming all the land, not taking out those areas that we talked about that have the steeper slopes. Given that and given the need, which we already know uh for low income, which is just less than a hundred percent at a thousand units over the course of our twenty years, um, staff is recommending that you at least think about the notion of going back to the corner duplex idea. Again, uh uh in terms of the numbers of corner lots, rough calculation, believe me, it was rough. But it's about six hundred corners. And um there would be less depending on how a corner was defined. Um, there could be more uh if I missed corners. Um, but again, I don't think you could assume that all those corners would develop as duplexes. There's existing residences on those corners, for example. Anyway, you can see the numbers are small, and so uh staff is just wanting you to consider whether you want to expand the area for duplexes.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you, Lori. Can you remind us about um the rationale for considering corners lots specifically for this kind of development? Is it, does it have something to do with the fact that there's two sides and that that might kind of alleviate the
impact?
Feeling of density? Is that what it is?
Yeah, the um the notion of corner duplexes, believe it or not, has been around for a really long time. And the state, uh, when they were saying, here are things cities should consider, the notion of corner duplexes was something they said should be, could be looked at. And in fact, Bothell, using a state grant, uh, just passed, as you recall, I sent out the information a couple of months ago, passed new rules for corner lot duplexes. And again, the idea is that you're at the end of a block, you're facing two streets, so it's not quite the same as being in the middle of a long block in a single-family neighborhood. There there there's something different. Idea is that there's something different at the corner. You might have doors on the two sides off of each street, for example.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you, Lori. So with um the corner duplexes, the thinking there is that they would be allowed anywhere in town, not restricted to that one quarter or one half.
Right.
Mile.
Anywhere in the R, I would say in the R six zone.
Okay, in the R six zone.
Again, if the if the commission's idea was to preserve corridors or focus on uh critical area, critical areas in a broader sense, the only definition we have is R one and R four. So that was where I was thinking the R six would be most appropriate.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
I wanna go back to the uh comment about need for affordability. Uh, if we're talking about affordability, I thought we'd already put to rest the idea that you can really build affordable housing uh in any of these uh single-family zones. That if even if you're talking about a duplex or a triplex, you're still talking about something in the six to probably one million dollar range, and you're not going to be building housing for people uh at or even reasonably above there or within the median uh that we're looking for. So is that not true anymore? And also, we already created, I believe, we've we've asked this question and had it answered several times, that we already have sufficient capacity designated for, particularly for affordable housing uh in our current zoning uh oh uh along five twenty-two and uh where we previously had decided we were going to focus density. So what am I missing?
So we don't have affordable housing numbers. We have overall capacity numbers. We have adequate capacity in the city. But you'll recall that the affordable housing numbers are different. Uh, what the countywide planning policies ask us to do is to dedicate future units at certain levels of affordability, extremely low, low, very low. And so we have uh if you do an analysis of those units, we don't have those units in place. Now, the question of affordability comes up in a couple of different ways. First of all, there's the bottom line assumption that increased capacity increases affordability, that the more units you have, the greater the affordability will be for the region. That's one thing. And then the second thing is that the duplex uh information that we had, and it was very uh very much restricted cuz there aren't that many, but the rental information was that the these would be rent, these aren't uh purchased. These are or they could be purchased and then rental, but the rental information was less than hundred percent of median. Those are existing duplexes, so they're older, but over time, uh we've had this discussion before that housing over time, as it ages, becomes more affordable. So for the future, you are creating housing that should become more affordable over time.
I I hear what you're saying, uh, Lori. I just doesn't stand it in my mind as reasonable. I I don't really, do we really think that, given the limited amount of a capacity that's out there for building, the developers are going to come in and build a small, multi uh duplexes or uh triplexes uh at a lower price point than they could uh build and uh profit at? I just don't see that happening. And in terms of, I agree, you know, quantity does tend to uh dampen uh address demand. But again, as you, the numbers you've given, this is a very small amount of potential build here. How much impact we really think that's gonna have on average pricing? Particularly seeing Kenmore is within a competitive environment as much lot, much beyond the city of Kenmore's limit. So we're gonna be competing against housing uh for the all our surrounding area where there is increased development going on. So I I'm not really seeing that building out triplexes, duplexes in single-family neighborhoods, R six or or other is really gonna have much of an impact on affordability uh to median-income families. Perhaps you have information that persuade me otherwise, but given what we've seen already, I just don't see it.
Yeah, I think uh one thing to think about is that once zoning is in place, it's in place forever. And if the vacant and redevelopable land is allowed to continue to build only single-family housing, there will be no other option. So we're looking at a variety of housing types that would allow uh more growth in the city, which more growth in the region uh is what is needed to address affordability. We have an urban growth boundary, so the growth has to happen inside urban growth boundary, which is why, you know, Vision twenty fifty and the countywide planning policies all say consider missing middle housing. It's another housing type. We think it's compatible with single-family development. The more housing stock we have and the more housing we have that might allow a different you know, a rental or allow someone to purchase a residence and then rent out part of it. Those options for the future should help with things.
Well, I don't wanna pick up any much more of time, but I I do wanna have a rebuttal to that. Again, I just don't see that there's numbers here that would actually have a significant impact on affordability. And I think we've already provided uh in our current zoning uh ample uh prob- uh potential for building truly affordable uh both for purchase and rental. So I'm not really seeing why we need to do this. It seems to come down to uh once you depending on how you feel about affordability and the reasonableness of being able to build out it uh the residential, single-family, four more, really what you come down to is the growth management preference and uh statement that we ought to provide the opportunity for duplexes and triplexes somewhere in the city. And I think that's that's a very different uh discussion. And I I think it gets confusing when we try and tie that to affordability, where it doesn't really seem to me to be to be a strong argument in support of that.
I I'd like to, I'd like to just kind of build a little bit briefly on on what Mike mentioned. I I wanna make sure I I kinda understand this. So Lori, um, you, Brian said that existing homes are unlikely to do conversions to duplex or triplex. So I get that right because of the firewall and the need for separate meter. So so that's a very limited market. Um, so then you're you had the figures, I guess, anywhere from twenty to, you know, at the low end to two hundred and fifty at the at the very highest end on most optimistic scenario. So so does that suggest that, you know, if if this was to go through, that the majority of duplexes and triplexes would then be created through teardowns of existing homes? And I know we got a letter, uh, I think you all saw that from a citizen that I think kind of addressed that and suggested that, you know, that that also doesn't really do a whole lot for affordability, cuz as Mike noted, the price points even for duplexes are you know, probably more than than what would be for a, you know, a new, a new single-family home. So I'm just trying to understand what we're potentially unleashing here, and is that gonna be the scenario that would be most likely for duplexes and triplexes to be developed? So I I'm
So one thing that I think is important to think about is that the number, the two hundred and fifty number uh was if a hundred percent of every lot
Right, that was
vacant or redevelopable were
The high, high end, yeah.
Or not even converted, it would just be built. Uh, if you looked at twenty-five percent, again, at uh a quarter mile, it was nineteen to thirty-eight.
Right.
Twenty to forty. And I think that the the way this capacity work was done, it's on vacant land and it's on redevelopable land. And I I wish I had right in front of me the the standard for what redevelopable is in single-family. And I think it's that you have a house on a lot size that could actually be converted. So you have one house on three acres or whatever. That's probably considered redevelopable because under the zoning, if it were R one, for example, you could build three houses and there's only one house. There's a standard for how redevelopable was calculated. So these are houses on lots that are big enough that they could be subdivided under the current zoning rules. Uh, it, this was not assuming that other houses, for example, houses that were on a lot in an R six zone that had a seventy-two hundred square foot lot, it was not assuming that those would be torn down.
So yeah, so I I I just kinda throw that out there as as I guess it's a little, a little concerning, you know, that like to build on what Mike said, that you know, what what is the actually the market for this and who would develop it and what would be the, you know, sort of the longer-term term impacts. Um, yeah, so, uh, go ahead, Tracy.
I have two things that I'm going to try to hold in mind. They're separate. One dovetails with what you just said, Mark. I know with that development on uh sixty-eighth and one ninetieth that a developer did buy several different parcels, including some single-family homes, tore them all down to put in that um larger development. And I know I if I recall correctly, there was some, and I'm bringing up the details of this to help us think through what like future possible scenarios might be in our community. I I, if I understand correctly, the zoning
You're you're kind of freezing up, Tracy. Yeah.
Single order for them to state. I'm sorry. I think my internet
We kinda lost your last thirty seconds or so.
I think my internet connection might be unstable, so maybe I will let other people um go and and if it gets better, I'll circle back.
Okay. Maybe while we're waiting for Tracy or someone else. So when we're talking about, uh, you know, a conversion, um, not expanding the building footprint, which was our, I think, conceptual idea, um, can you remind me what that means in terms of height, Lori? And it's, it does, it still would have to follow the same height. And it's, it still would have to follow the same height requirements for that zoning district. Is that correct?
Right. And, and I guess I had not assumed, I hadn't made any assumptions about height. The 35 foot height limit is the limit in single family zones. So it certainly couldn't exceed that.
Right, okay. Okay, Tracy, go ahead. It looks like you're.
I, I got a message before that said my internet connection was unstable, so I'm afraid that that might happen again. If it does, please move on and I will, I will come, come back. I don't know how much of what you caught, but I was talking about that development on 60, 68th and 190th and how a developer did buy several parcels, including some single family homes and raise them. And if I understand, and I'm bringing this up to the specifics of this to try to understand what might happen in our community in future, if it has, if it's representative at all. But as I understand it, I think the zoning for that area was changed, which increased the property taxes for those homes. No, that's not true. Okay. Anyway, yeah.
I think that is a town home project.
It is, yeah.
Thinking of the same project. Town homes are currently allowed in single family zoning if they go through a conditional use permit. And a town home is not the same thing as a duplex or triplex. We're going to talk about town homes. But a duplex or triplex again is either two units or three units.
Okay.
Are.
Yeah. Okay, that's great. Thank you. I guess maybe the second thing, I'll bring it up now as long as my internet connection is doing okay. This is a separate issue, but Lori, I'm wondering if we could, you could talk about that provision in the Growth Management Act that several people have brought up now about how we are supposed to protect the vibrancy of residential communities, including single family homes, and how that sits side by side with the mandate to also consider these missing middle housing types. Like what, how, how do we hold those two things in mind in terms of what the Growth Management Act is telling us?
Well, I think you hold those two things in mind as the commenter stated, through the notion of balance. I think the Growth Management Act is supportive of residential neighborhoods generally. I think at the time the Growth Management Act was written 20, 30 years ago, this whole discussion had never come up. I think that the Growth Management Act now is talking about missing middle housing and certainly the legislature is as our Vision 2050 and the countywide planning policies. So the notion of missing middle housing is not in opposition to the Growth Management Act. Again, single family, missing middle housing, both have a place in a community. And that's how I, I would think you live with both of them, side by side.
Maybe some other commissioners can chime in with, with your thoughts as well, because I'm interested in hearing from, hearing different thoughts on this, but I'm, I'm feeling like there's some in the community, some perception that these missing middle housing types would somehow destroy single family neighbor. I don't really know. I'm trying to figure out like what the real concern is. So we can drill down into it and, and see how we can address it or, or how that, you know, directs our, my recommendations. Yeah, it's just a thorny thing I've been thinking about a lot. I'm open to thoughts.
May I pop in real quick?
Sure, go ahead, Nathan.
Okay, so I agree with what a lot is being said here. And then another idea that just came to me was, or a thought that's on my mind, has to do with parking. Because I know we discussed about reducing parking requirements when we have duplexes and triplexes close to transit areas and centers. My concern is if we expand the region to allow these away from those positions, while also reducing parking requirements for them, that it could cause issues, especially if they're on street corners. Because I know street corners are not great places to allow a property that doesn't have enough parking, I guess, to accommodate the, the buildings there. So that's, that's another thing in the back of my mind is keeping that balance. And if we do have to, again, increase or keep the parking requirements at the position they're at now, then that really drives down the attractiveness of developing duplexes and triplexes on corner properties around the city. So I'm, I'm concerned about the, thinking through the, the effects of it and just how it's going to, trying to find this balance and how it works out if we do expand throughout the city and the practicality of it.
Well, to your, to your point, Tracy, I mean, I, you know, you, you've all seen this, you know, at least some of the, I'm sure all of the public comments, you know, about this. And yeah, there certainly is a, you know, a strong undercurrent of, of, of resistance to, you know, to change in the neighborhood of, of, you know, certainly of, of a large scale. So I mean, I think we're trying, you know, we're trying to look at this and, you know, in some kind of balanced way where, where the impacts and, you know, in individual neighborhoods hopefully would be very small. But, you know, that's, that's a good question. I, maybe until we hear, you know, more from the community and the listening, we don't have a full grasp of that, but.
Yeah, I think when I, when I think about, you know, inserting, I don't know what size our lot is, but it's, it's just a, it seems like it's a pretty typical, not large, but not small lot in Kenmore. And when I think about putting there, if there weren't our single family home here, if there were like a duplex or a triplex or even as many town homes that could fit, that to me, that doesn't seem like it would be posed too much of a big change to my neighborhood. But then I think about that development, again, I'm just because it's top of mind on 68th and 190th. Like that's a huge change to that neighborhood because of the sheer amount of town homes that are being built. So that's another thing that I'm thinking about, like how, how do you balance those things out? Maybe for the developer, it wasn't, it didn't, it wouldn't have made sense to, to build it at any other scale than, than the one that they are. And maybe that's the only way they could make it pencil out. But then, you know, but then we're talking about like what's the, in the best interest of the developer versus what's in the best interest of the neighborhood? And how do we put those two things together? Or just the things, I mean, I don't have any answers.
That's a great question. Yeah, that's a great question. I was a little, actually, you know, when Lori said, you know, about the lack of conversions of exist, that's one thing I was really thinking that that's where the duplexes would be, you know, probably have, be the least impactful. He had an existing home and you just created, you know, two living units from that. But it sounds like that's not going to be a very common scenario according to, according to Lori and Brian there. So, yeah.
So I, I wonder if it might be helpful to go, go back and, you know, hold the town home thought, which is sort of a different discussion and go back to the duplex, triplex version and, and just sort of talk through some of those questions and see whether the commissioner, the commission, where the commission wants to fall out in terms of that. And I'm happy this time to share my screen. I think I can do it this time and don't have to rely on Dwight. So here we talked in the, this is a staff memo. We talked about your discussion about conversion, but then these were our original recommendations about duplex and triplex. And again, we've changed this, I know, based on new information, but I think we can talk through the issues. So the first question was this issue of distance to transit and services. Whether you want to retain this type of housing closer to transit and services. We looked at both a quarter mile and a half mile. And then the question, which you may or may not wish to revisit about duplexes, not triplexes, but duplexes on corner lots in some areas of the city. Those are kind of the three options that we have presented.
So I'm, Lori, with the, the results regarding the probability that these would be built out, being relatively small. And, and given that, if we're kind of trying to, to go for which one of these middle, missing middle housings would give us the biggest bang for the buck? And this definitely isn't one of them, then I, I'm thinking maybe leave it as restrictive as we have it to protect the single family homes. But I don't, I don't know what other folks think.
Um, I am wondering, I, I think I keep coming back to town homes, not because I feel like I want to discuss town homes in particular, because, but I, because I feel like that's the only example in our community that I have of like what this middle missing housing looks like. So what, what, how would the development of duplexes and triplexes be different from the, some of the town home developments that we have seen in the community? Are we supposing that they would really be on smaller lots and they wouldn't get clustered? Like these towns, some of these town home developments are being, or what, what is the difference?
Yeah.
I understand they're different housing types. I get that part.
Right. So there are a couple of ways to approach it. And that's this comment down here, size and scale of new structures. So there, it, there's kind of an analysis that could be done either through research work that has been done or through looking at neighborhoods that says, this is sort of the typical size of a house, for example. And maybe for a triplex, you increase that a little bit. But for a duplex, does it really need to be any bigger than an existing house? So that what you're trying to do is match the scale of the duplex or triplex to the scale of the existing neighborhood. So you're not overwhelming it. So you certainly wouldn't see two mansions attached together to be a duplex. That's not the idea. I think early on, former Commissioner Howard sent in a picture of a duplex in Bothell that basically took up the whole lot. That is not, I hope, what we're talking about here. I think we would be looking at putting standards, and this is what I'm, I'm hoping we can talk about at your first November meeting. Putting standards around the size of these things so that they are compatible with the neighborhood. There may be two units in it, there may be three units in it, but it's not a giant multifamily structure. That's not the point. That sort of defeats the whole purpose of missing middle housing. The town homes, now, could you realistically do a subdivision of 7,200 square foot lots with duplexes on each one? Yeah, you probably could, but if they're the same size as single family houses, is that an issue? It's not a town home project with multiple five or six units side by side that are probably taller at least than the surrounding residences. Again, that's not what we're talking about. And that's why we want to come back to. And as we move forward with recommendation, have a general understanding, if not the complete zoning rules. We were talking about these things to address this concern.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, thank you for that. As you're speaking, I would remember would call back to our discussions and the work we did related to ancillary dwelling units. And you gave us, I think, some very useful information and some diagrams that showed what lot sizes would be relative to different options for sizes of the unit. I, I think as we get into the discussion, you, you just teed up. It would be very useful to have that again. And I know this is a, a order of magnitude more difficult than just looking at ADUs, but I think that may help us inform at least the first part of what we need to be deciding is what would be a reasonable design. I think that still leaves us to the discussion of the extent and then where we put these, which gets to, I think the basic question that we really fundamentally have been struggling with, which is we're talking about density, talking about increasing the need to increase the density in the city of housing units. And this is not a new discussion. We've been working on this, I think, every year I can remember. And the conclusion we came up with last time, when we just decided, yes, we need to do our fair share to create density for housing for future folks. And we came up, we came up with a whole number of new land use designations within the city. Some designated specifically for conservation, some for urban, some for quasi-urban. And what we did will be decided, well, we're going to focus our density growth near to where we already had infrastructure or intended to build it very soon. It would be close to downtown to support the economic development of the city we wanted to do and was also near to transit. And we have districts set up already to do that. And we zoned in their multifamily and multi-use with significant incentives to build in affordable housing. That was what we came up with. And at the time, we seemed to be very satisfied with it. Now we seem to be saying, well, no, we need to have even more density. And we need to be able to use missing metal duplexes and triplexes to spread this density out across virtually the rest of the city. So the question I keep coming back to is, how much density do we really want? And how do we get to that? Do we get to it by rezoning, a large rezoning? Or we do it incrementally over time to see what actually develops in the marketplace and in demand? And that to me is maybe the next question that comes after saying, okay, what is a duplex look like? What does a triplex look like on what kind of appropriate sized lot? Is how much of those do we need? And where does it make sense to put them? Is it everywhere? Or are there key places? Maybe it's corner lot. I'm not saying that that's the right answer, but that's an option. Is it within a quarter of a mile? Does it have to be a half a mile? Which gets into the question, not only just how dense do we want to be, but also the vision of what Kenmore is going to look like five, 10, 20 years down the line. Maybe it's inevitable that we are going to become Seattle, that we're going to be very dense and we need to do that. If so, then we need to plan for it. But how do we get there? If that's true, and that's what we buy into? Or do we have a different vision for the city in terms of how much density we really think is appropriate for, for our city? I'll stop there, but those are the questions that come into my mind when we start having these discussions. Before we get down to the specifics, I think we need to have, and maybe this is the part of the discussion with the community, is what's their vision? How much density do they really want to have? How much do, to answer that, have, ask them to answer that. We're going to have to tell them how much is, do we really need to have? And what is the advantage of that? If we increase our density, we're going to put more pressure on our parks, more pressure on our conservation lands. Do we need more of that? Are we willing to accept that? We're going to put more pressure on our city services. We're going to put more pressure on our infrastructure. How are we going to afford that? When I start looking at this, and if you don't, as I do, don't buy the argument that we're doing this for affordable housing. Really what we come down to is what's the major impact that's going to be after you take into account a density? It's going to generate more revenue for government to provide those services that we're going to need to be able to afford that density. I'm, I fear that we're getting into a circular argument here. What are we really accomplishing here? So I think at some point, I'd like to go, have us go back to a discussion, not just as a commission, but the city is what do we want? And what is our real responsibility to the community, the wider community? And what, what does that look like in terms of how much density? And what, what does that look like in terms of how much density we, we would accept or need to?
I guess I would kind of going along the lines with what Mike was just talking about. I would be interested to understand the difference between the number of living units or housing when, when that rezoning occurred. And we were looking at the transit corridor. So I'm assuming that some amount of housing was identified for that. And so I'd be interested to know what the gap is between that amount of housing and what we're looking for now as part of the Growth Management Act or that we're trying to satisfy with this missing middle housing program.
So the, the city's capacity numbers included only one area of the TOD, the, at the higher level of density. That's because the TOD currently is an optional zone. And without those number, higher numbers with the TOD, the city has adequate capacity. The issue is affordable housing capacity. And I know this seems strange, but there are different sets of numbers. And so I haven't done, or we haven't done an analysis of, you know, if you have to provide 10% affordable housing and looking at vacant redevelopable land in the TOD, what that might look like. It's possible that we could make an estimate of that, assuming that those changes moved forward. It doesn't address the regional responsibility to at least look at missing middle housing. And as another housing type. So I think what these larger policy documents are trying to do is get away from either you live in an apartment in a great big building or you live in a single family house. There's nothing in between. And there is a great need, I think we see that with the townhouses, for different housing styles and housing types. So that's what's prompting this discussion. And I always come back to the fact that the affordability issue is an issue of supply. We know that duplexes and townhomes even are less expensive than a single family home. So they're not affordable to the low income, but they are more affordable than a single family home. Those are kind of the guideposts for why we're having this conversation.
Right. But again, with the affordable housing, so are there some expectations that we're not aware of? I mean, the, the townhomes and those kinds of things, we had talked about the fact that those can cost up to a million dollars for a townhome. And if, if we're then come to find out that we have to have homes that are, you know, a lot less expensive than that. I feel like we're trying to hit a moving target with a lot of our discussions. One, one day it's affordable housing, another day it's, you know, one of these different housing types. And another day it's hitting the transit area or the corners. And it, it's confusing to figure out what our target really is.
So the target is all of those things. Which, the purpose of missing middle housing is to satisfy all of these different things. Environmental protection, different housing types, increased supply for more affordability, more affordable housing generally. It's expensive, yes, but it's more affordable than a single family home. So all these things, support for transit. All these things bundled together are why we're even talking about missing middle housing. And in terms of the affordable housing units, those are percentages that we are supposed to respond to in the countywide planning policies. And if you look at our growth, we're, we're supposed to provide additional units at these different levels. And I'm not saying the duplexes and triplexes are, we know this is not the case, that they are going to satisfy 30% or less AMI. That means government subsidy, 30 to 50%, which is very low income. Isn't, these aren't going to satisfy that either. These new housing types that we're talking about are probably, in the best case, in terms of affordability for those about, at about 100% AMI, and they may be more, but they are still less than a single family home. So I, I don't think that we're shooting at many different targets. Missing middle hits a number of the things we're supposed to address, which is why we're talking about it. And we come at it from different angles, depending on what interest we're pursuing or looking at, what aspect of it we're looking at.
And I just want to add, this is not a question of meeting density. Where the density, we certainly have concentrated in the downtown area and along the transit corridors. Missing middle is, is not that. So it's not a question of that we would be allowing those same densities in the single family neighborhoods. It's essentially, as Lori said, a question of choice. And where we are right now is with the Planning Commission, as you indicated, you wanted an incremental approach. And the incremental approach was focused on infrastructure and transit. And we've looked at that and said, you, we can do that, but it's not going to get you very many units, which is why we're saying if you want to push that incremental approach a little bit further down the path, look at it on corner lots. We're not saying that to allow sort of blanket townhome redevelopment in the single family neighborhoods. That is not true. That is not what missing middle is. So I think first of all, it's kind of clarifying what it is and what it isn't. It is not huge townhome developments in single family neighborhoods. It's not a way to address density. It's a way to give housing choices in single family neighborhoods. And then it would be compatible with the single family in terms of scale, parking, and all the other issues, which is the next discussion for zoning. So really, I think we have, if we agree, if we can agree, that this is sort of an incremental approach. Missing middle is one way to provide housing choice and get back to the discussion of where it is. And then the discussion of compatibility will, will come next. So I think we're, we're just trying to see if there is, the Planning Commission is interested in pursuing, continuing to pursue that incremental approach. Pushing, pushing the envelope a little bit more on that incremental approach. And if we get the answer to that, then we can move forward with the rest of the discussion at the next meeting.
I think you made a lot of really good points there, Debbie. Just a thought here on, on the question of affordability specifically. So, you know, duplex and triplexes, there's no, there's no opportunity as, even, you know, on most of these townhome units to have, you know, some percentage of affordable housing be part of those developments. Doesn't sound like that's, you know, feasible from what I understand. Are there any other, I suppose, tools that might be available to help support specific development of affordable housing elsewhere via this missing middle housing? Is there any way to link that if there are to be these, you know, developments, however, we eventually maybe recommend that?
I think that's something that we, we can explore, because if you're looking at a duplex or a triplex, that's three units. So would it make sense to have, to require inclusionary affordable housing? If you're building a duplex, which would mean you'd have to build, build one at very affordable and one not? I don't know if that makes sense. So, um, I, we're currently seeing if there's any other innovative ways to, whether it's maybe not being inclusionary, maybe there's a way that you could require a payment of a fee or something. I don't know. We're trying to figure out if there's any approaches that would address affordability with not necessarily requiring an affordable unit to be one of the duplex or triplex units. We're looking into that right now.
Great. That's exactly what I was trying to get to. So you're, you're ahead of me. So that's, that's great to hear. But I, I guess unless anybody else has any other, you know, comments, I, I like that approach of kind of getting to the, you know, the, the boundaries, if you will, of, of what we may want to consider in this. So anybody else have any, you know, further thoughts before we dig into that a little bit further? Okay. So go ahead, Lori and Debbie, on that. If you want to guide that piece of it, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I think what would be helpful for us is we've talked about distance from critical areas that we have the critical area rules, and we have identified R1 and R4 as critical area corridors, if you want to call them that. We've talked about how determining size and scale of new structures is something we have to discuss because we want them to be of compatible size. Parking, again, we're suggesting it be reduced, but we don't know what we're talking about. So it's hard to, to say anything about that. And review process for a duplex or a triplex, staff is recommending that just a building permit be required, but that the code requirements be clear enough that everybody knows what the project is going to look like. So that takes us back to the first question, which is the hardest question at this point, and that is where? Well, you have four options. I suppose you could say nowhere. That would not be consistent with our regional guidance. You could say near transit and services, which is where you initially had proposed the change. And then, and you talked about a quarter mile or a half mile from transit corridors. Or staff is, is asking if you want to stretch the envelope farther and talk about duplexes on corner lots in all of our six zone. So those were, again, the options we identified, and we're just looking for some preliminary direction from the commission on which of those we should continue to discuss.
Lori, can you bring up the, can you stop sharing your screen so we can see everybody?
Sure. Yeah.
I think that would facilitate this discussion here. Thank you. All right. Anybody have any thoughts, I guess, on preferences or, or directions?
Well, I'll jump out there. I appreciate your comment, Debbie. I think you're absolutely right. The, the next discussion, maybe a little difference on the density piece. But I, I think the, the key question is the one that Mark has teed up, which is where? Where, where should this be? I'm thinking back to some of our earlier presentations and some of the reading I've done on strong cities. And they talk about how you go from a more dense to less dense as you move away from your urban core and back off of that urban core into the next level, which would include the middle housing options that we're talking about today. I really liked that idea, and I know a number of cities, including San Francisco, have taken that up in building those middle housing behind or coming off of, of those major arterials. And I like that idea, and I think that's where, where our original concept was. The question I think we're at is how far back do you go? I still like quarter mile, and I'll tell you why. Maybe the half mile may, you know, 10 years down the line may prove to be a, a good solution. But I think that there's enough of unknowns right now, but the idea of going about this incrementally makes a lot of sense. And I would like to hear some more about the capacity issues and what that would give us if we were to do that. But I think in my mind, that's an incremental approach, and I would be in favor of that. I'm less enamored with the idea of corner lots throughout the city. I think we just don't know enough about how that would look like, maybe after we've had some of our design discussions. Maybe some of those concerns would be ameliorated, but I, I just at this point don't feel a level of confidence that I would want to make that radical a change. So summarizing, centering on major arterials, quarter of a mile duplexes and triplexes, I think would be an option. I do appreciate the exclusion of our ones and our sixes, our fours. I think that makes a, a lot of sense.
I agree with Mike.
Others want to share their thoughts on, on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in. I, I agree with Mike and Suzanne as well. I'm kind of in the same position. I jumped back to that map that we had that mapped out a quarter mile boundary versus half mile boundary. And when you look at it, a half mile boundary almost includes the entirety of the city. And I was looking at it, it looked like it included a vast majority of the city. So it's almost a quarter mile or the entire city when talking about distance from transit. So I, I would agree with that incremental approach with a quarter mile. I think that carves out a large stretch of the city, and it puts it close to transit districts, like, or not districts, but the transit services that we've talked about and how we've kind of prioritized that approach. And we know that, you know, that kind of entails that it's closer to other services and infrastructure, which is something that we've prioritized as well. And, and I, I'm kind of with Mike on, I'm hesitant to expand it to the entire city just based alone off the number of citizen comments we've gotten so far. It shows that there's a lot of hesitancy by a lot of our citizens. And so I think at least for right now, I'd be comfortable saying a quarter mile. But in the future, I think bringing in citizens to hear their comments on the idea as well. You know, that would be another discussion, something that we could look at. But as for myself, based on what we know, based on what we know and don't know about how the citizens feel about this right now, and a lot of comments we've gotten, I'm, I'd stick to a quarter mile with Mike and Suzanne here.
Dwight, Tracy, Dennis, any, any thoughts you want to share? Go ahead, go ahead, Dwight.
Oh, good. I found my mouse. So. You know, this is a little different, difficult for me. I understand the issue of needing affordability. I am absolutely not convinced that this is going to provide affordability clearly. Number two is that our density, the requirements under the Growth Management Act or whatever comes down from King County and from the Puget Sound Council. I, our density to do this, there's no requirement to do that because we can, we can get all the density and meet all of our other needs regardless of, you know, affordability, availability to transit and all those other issues just by keeping in the transit district and in the downtown area. Now, I do understand that there are some property owners down there that are not willing to make the jump to this right now. But we're looking at the long haul. So that's particularly important to not, that the, we keep that down there. The, the whole, yeah, so that's where our infrastructure is. To think about our infrastructure on our arterials or anywhere else in the, in the city, I think is just, it's just not there. I mean, let's face it, we're doing some projects to put some infrastructure up on 68th, et cetera, but you know, the, the real thing about, unless you're downtown, you don't have infrastructure to walk to. And I'm not for creating local community business districts. I don't think that anybody of our citizen constituents, residents want us to do that. Finally, Finally, you know, triplex versus duplex. So I'm not so against the concept of duplexes. In most anywhere, not necessarily everywhere, but I'm a little more flexible about the issue. It's, it's a lighter impact. On parking, on the environment, on a lot of different things that, that. Out in the, aside from the business districts and everything else. If, once we go above a duplex, it becomes problematic. And so I'm more in the duplex side of life. So that's my. My view of things and I know that that. Is slightly conservative regarding the viewpoint that we maintain. The residential areas. And I understand that. That is. Has social, economic and, and. Other issues related to that. But I just don't know whether we're going to meet. Affordability. And infrastructure needs by. Creating a whole lot of, of new. Genuinely unwanted development in our single family residential areas. Thank you very much.
Tracy, Dwight, go ahead. Excuse me, Dwight, go ahead, Tracy.
Dennis, would you like to go or, or would you like to wait? After me, okay, thank you. I, at this point. I understand the aesthetic. And practical reasons for constraining this kind of missing middle housing to. Quarter mile or a half mile walk shed. And I do feel like an incremental approach. Might be the way to have a longer conversation with our community about these housing types. However. When I think about. Some of my environmental concerns. I feel like. I might like to use a different metric for where we put things rather than just simply a quarter mile or a half mile from. Transit or downtown core. Because our critical areas run through downtown. Like Swamp Creek, for example, runs through downtown to get to the Sammamish River. So the Sammamish River is. Very close to our, a highly developed part of Kenmore. Down 61st where I live, it's full of ravines from 522 up. Not, actually further away, it gets flatter, but close to 522, there, there are a lot of ravines. So I worry about us putting pressure on the environment. More so than we have to actually by trying to constrain the development. Rather than using a different metric for where this kind of, these kinds of housing types might, might fit. Again, while still acknowledging that there are aesthetic reasons for it, like it does make sense to have taller development like in a very urban core and then gradually. You know, have the housing types be smaller. There's an aesthetic. Thing about that, that really it makes sense from a people point of view. And also being close to services and transit also makes sense, but there's just something about the, you know, what, where is the land telling us? That we should be putting housing to me doesn't seem like it. Drives exactly with where we've already put our most dense developments and I would like to be thinking about that as we move forward. So I'm. Those are my thoughts right now.
Thanks, Tracy.
I'll pass it to.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis.
It's hard to know how to balance everything that's been said. But I definitely am supportive of the incremental approach. And I am concerned about not knowing. Some of the impacts. If we get too huge. So. I, I am supportive of the approach that we've been taking and. It basically, you know, the comments that have been made by. By the people here, it's, it's how to balance it and when do we get to it? And that's where. I think the incremental approach is gonna allow us not to step. Into a big hole.
Thanks, Dennis, and thanks, everybody. Yeah, I think there's some really good comments there. I'm, I'm also of the incremental camp. In fact, initially I thought. You know, if we could start with some kind of pilot project on the, on the lines, I believe it was Tacoma did a pilot project with Missing Middle Housing. I thought that was a really. Good way to do it because this is such a major change to our, our single family. So anybody, it sounds like there's too many external pressures to do something along those lines. So. So yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with the group that wants to do, you know, make this. Pretty restrictive, a quarter mile, obviously near transit. Tracy makes really good points about environmental impacts and I don't know how we. Hopefully we can, you know, thread that needles, we get a little closer. I, I, I guess I'm also thinking that if we can, you know, the smaller we start. And if we have enough, you know, sort of guidelines in place to, to, to really. You know, minimize the impact on, on specific neighborhoods. I think. I think people will see that it's not gonna, you know, we're not talking about 20 story apartment buildings going up in their neighborhood. I think there's a conception out there that people. Are going to have, you know, these apartment buildings next to their single family homes. So I think if we start small. And show that this can, can work and can fit in with the appropriate scale that I think it has a much better chance of. Of meeting, you know, the, the multiple goals that have been outlined. So, yeah, so I, I'm in that incremental camp as well, so. Go ahead, Tracy.
Just for a point of information for me, we are having this conversation. Is, is it right as part of updating the housing element? And the comprehensive plan? So when's the next time that we will have this conversation to update the housing element in the comprehensive plan? How many years out is that?
Yeah, the overall requirement is every eight years, but the city has never been. Static. So we have made amendments. Over the course of the eight years in a variety of ways. More, more recently, it's mostly been in the commercial zones. But we're not constrained. It's not like we can only do it once every eight years.
So the way that, oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Debbie, go ahead.
I was gonna say that the. The comprehensive plan provides the policies and what we're currently looking at with Missing Middle is providing the comprehensive plan policies and the regulations that go with it. I think it would be important to have in the comprehensive plan, if you are taking this incremental approach. To be clear on what the policies are that support that. So in other words, that it's clear that this is a first step. And maybe then the policy then might help kind of guide what might be future steps. So to kind of indicate that this housing element, it's an incremental approach and this is the first of several steps. And so I think that might be something to consider when you come back to the policies, but right now we, we made a commitment that. For Missing Middle, we would come forward with not only comp plan, but also the, some implementing regulations as well. I think the last time we did a. An overall redo of the housing own, I believe was in 2015. But if you have the comp plan policies in there, that can then guide what the implementing regulations will be in the future. So that's. I guess what we're saying is, I mean, if you want an incremental approach. This would be the first step of regulations to implement the overall comp plan policies that you're doing.
And then I'm sorry, Nathan has his hand up, but I just to follow up on that question. So if we are taking this as a, if, if, if our policy recommendation is an incremental one. That. We could revisit this sooner than like.
Yeah, you can, you can amend the comprehensive plan typically once a year. So you don't tip. It's usually once a year, which is kind of what your work program is, is, is amending the comprehensive plan. So the update that we're working on right now is land use and housing. The overall update of the comprehensive plan is due in. June of 2023. So we wouldn't be probably opening up the housing element again. Sooner than 2024 would be the soonest in terms of a comp plan amendment. But it's not to say that if you have comp plan policies. In place that you could then. Do some more development regulations other than consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I might jump in and say that in fact, that's probably what staff will recommend depending on where the cottage housing discussion. Ends up. Where maybe there's a policy in the comprehensive plan about cottage housing. But in an implementation measure, there's always a list of implementation measures at the end of a chapter. That doing the actual regulations would be an implementation measure. Of the comprehensive plan. That's different from what we are. Expecting, hoping to do with duplexes and triplexes where we hope to have the regulations move along with. Comp plan policies.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Going back to some of the information, Lori, you provided us at the beginning. You gave us a number of. What was it? Potentially developable properties or something for duplexes and triplexes? Is that right?
I had an estimate of. Acreages. They can end developable lands and then I took. How many units, how many single family units could be potentially built? On that land and. Estimated how many, if duplexes and or triplexes were built, what that range would look like.
And, and was that over the entirety of the city?
No, I, I looked at the half mile and the quarter mile. Areas.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. I, I couldn't remember if that was the entire city or just the. The street corners. There were a lot of, a lot of numbers thrown out, so.
Yeah. The street corners were just the count of street corners.
Right.
I didn't look at capacity there.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just maybe following briefly what, what Nathan just said. So. In terms of the 600, okay, so Lori, just to be clear, on the corner duplexes you suggested, I think you said 600 corner lots in, in Kenmore in the R six zone. Is that, did I get that note, note right?
Yeah, I think it's, it's possible. I was working off a different map. It's possible that some of those corners were actually in the R four and R six zones. I, I didn't have the, the right overlay to tell exactly, so it may be less than that.
Right, but that's an approximation. So how much of that would fall within, do you have any idea, but you know, our. At least potential quarter mile to. You know, transit.
Yeah, I don't know.
Don't know, okay. So does that, anybody else have any thoughts? Dennis, go ahead.
Because of the confusion and all the numbers, I don't know if you want to take an opportunity, Lori, to just sort of summarize it in writing.
That information. Yeah, I can recap that in your next memo.
Thank you.
So does that, Lori, give you, I guess, and Debbie directional. Information for now, I, do you, are you looking for more from us from tonight?
I think that what I'm hearing is that you want to stay for new duplexes or triplexes in that same general quarter mile area. Looking, not including R one or R four zoning areas and considering. Locations of critical areas that may be outside R one and R four. Did, did I, I think I captured that?
Just wanted to make sure, Lori, just for clarification or clarity. In our last go around here, we created conservation and natural areas. Actual zones when we, when we did the urban and. Downtown city. I'm assuming that those areas would also be excluded if they fell within that quarter mile.
Right, that. Even in the, in the numbers that I look at for capacity, those areas were not included.
And so they would not be, we would not be opening those up for, for development.
All right, it looks like.
Okay.
Quarter of nine, we can, I guess, move on at least. For a little bit here on, what would you like to do next, Lori? What's your?
So if you would let me share my screen. We'll look at the next. Set of. Issues. And that had to do with cottage housing. Again, this is one where we would not anticipate bringing forward. Regulations at this time, the, the form of a cottage housing project is pretty. Standardized. Kirkland has a good example. I thought master builders had a foundation, but they were actually thinking of ADU's cottage housing. So that's not. Quite right, but again. As with duplexes and triplexes, staff was recommending use the, using the half mile area. And probably the one difference was that in the half mile area, once the standards were established and that would be an implementation measure. Of the comprehensive plan that maybe. No. Requirement would be needed in that certain area, but that through a special permit review process, like a conditional use permit, it could be considered throughout. The city.
Anybody thoughts on this?
I have one thought that is related, but. Doesn't address the, it doesn't answer your question specifically, but I am. Generally, I think, I think using code and really tight standards to help people understand. What these developments will look like. Seems fine to me rather than a. Conditional use permit process. I, I am concerned about. Gentrification and this, these kinds of developments pushing out. Communities in some areas that may be considered underdeveloped. And maybe not as. You know. I'm thinking specifically along, I think it's 182nd, is that where one of the, the. Mobile home parks is behind City Hall? Is that right? Is it 182nd, 185th, something like that? And I'm just thinking where the, where the. The auction house is. I just, I, I don't want, I, I would hate to see those, a lot of people displaced because of, of more upscale development. And so that, that's a place where I feel like having public input and a, you know, different process might be beneficial to help keep people from being displaced. But I, I don't know if that's the proper way to address that issue or not. It's just a concern that I have that I wanted to bring up.
Building on that a little bit, Lori, I was wondering, you mentioned at the end, the review process, special permit review process, allowing neighborhood input. What? Could you elaborate on what that? Looks like. Allowing input.
So. A conditional use permit is a type of permit that C already has. And it's one where there is a notice, a notice of, is given of an application. And then there's an opportunity for the public to comment on the application. And those comments are taken into account when the decision is made. With a conditional use permit, there is an appeal process. That goes along with it. So that if. Someone didn't like the outcome or the decision that was made, there would be an opportunity for an appeal. So it, it's not like a building permit where there is no public comment, period. People don't know that the application has been submitted, et cetera. It's, it's just a more. Intensive review process to involve neighborhood input and there are criteria that go along with it that talk about compatibility, for example.
Well, maybe if I could ask everybody, how, how do people feel about the half mile walking distance? I think we had the, you know, quarter mile. For the duplexes and triplexes. Any thoughts on, on that specifically?
I'll jump in and say my preference would be. Cottage housing, in my view or my thought of this is actually even more different than duplex or triplex. From a single family neighborhood and we ought to be applying at least the same standard to cottage housing as we do to. Duplexes and triplexes. So I would say a quarter of a mile would be the same. The same requirement. I'm always leery of limiting public. Input. But if if we get a better understanding of what that review process would be like, which I think if it's standard to what we lived before, it may be okay. But I think this is something we'd want to go through the design review process before we make a decision on that.
Is this a point where we could all see each other again? Would that be okay so that we can? Thank you.
Go ahead Nathan.
Lori, do you happen to know if that property next door to Morelands are those cottage houses? Do you know which property I'm talking about?
No, I don't. I don't know the answer to that. The nearest cottage housing development I know about is in Kirkland. There are a couple of them there. And if you. If you wanted to look at cottage housing developments, you can actually Google cottage housing and and the cottage company is a local developer of cottage housing.
I was just asking because I know that. It looks like there's one property per se and then for, I think it's for smaller dwellings with on that property and. It didn't look like single family residences. They looked smaller than that, so I wasn't sure if those were cottages. That was some sort of cottage housing.
I don't think it could have been approved in the city. Maybe it's been there for a long time. We don't have cottage housing rules, so.
That that might be possible. I was just curious if you know anything about that. Anyways, to answer the question at hand here. Considering the fact that cottage housing developments do contain. More people on a property and does increase density, I'd be in favor, kind of like Mike said, to. Not expanding it beyond that quarter mile. Distance, just because it is higher density than duplexes and triplexes, so it doesn't make sense to me at least to. Expand that beyond those boundaries.
I'm in agreement with that and I like the idea of having. The permit review process allowing neighborhood input.
I am ambivalent, just as I was with the duplexes and triplexes. I feel like. I I see the benefits of containing them, but I also I'm not. I'm not a solid yes on that. I'm not convinced for many reasons that that's, you know, from an equity point of view, from environmental points of view. From climate points of view, I'm not yet convinced that that is what I would personally recommend. Consider I'm, I think I'm the minority on this on the planning commission and that's fine. I'll just continue to think it over.
Any others, Dennis Dwight on on this particular. Cottage housing piece. Go ahead, Dennis.
I'm really with what Mike and Suzanne and Nathan have been saying. So. Limited to that. Quarter mile.
How about you Dwight? Do you have any thoughts on this one?
Well, I definitely would limit it to a quarter mile, but I'm kind of with Tracy. I'm just a little concerned about the. The whole picture here as far as the impacts and also I think we're early in the discussion and. This is a particularly heavy concept to allow wherever we decide to allow it. And we need to consider community input and further deliberation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of in the middle here. I think I certainly agree with the quarter mile and. Some, you know, the other things that Mike and others mentioned, but yeah, I think the size, scale and design, the second bullet point here, that's absolutely critical to really further understand it and what the, you know, community. Values and supports, because this is a lot different than duplex and triplex. I mean, those are one building that we're talking, I don't know, who knows how many, you know, separate. It's just a different scale. So I think we want to know a lot more about it as well before we. Are ready for any kind of further recommendation, but. So so does that, Laura, I think you have at least a sense of how this.
Right. So shall I turn to the next item?
We good?
Okay.
Okay.
So the next item is really townhouses. As you know, townhouses are already allowed in the city. They can go through a conditional use process to be approved. And so the question I think was not so much about. Changing the current rules unless an affordability requirement were to be added, but whether smaller. Clusters of townhouses with size and scale limitations would be okay outright. Without the conditional use permit. That's basically what the staff scenario is.
Thoughts, anybody?
Each other again before Nathan talks.
Yeah.
Helpful for me.
Yeah, I agree. That's.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
It's okay. I feel pesky bringing it up, but it's so helpful for me.
It's important.
Right.
I'll just jump in. Looking at the current state of the city and townhouses, it doesn't look like townhouses are being hindered by the current process we have right now. Kind of like Tracy was saying, there's developments even right now with the restrictions we have in place. So I don't feel that there's any need to open it up beyond what we have now. And I'm actually kind of concerned if we do open it up, what that could entail in the future. I think what we have right now is is good for right now. And townhouses seem to be popping up in the city, so I think what we have is all right for the time being.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, Mike.
One of my concerns that came to my head, which. Maybe Lori or Debbie can can help me with it. One of my concerns is, is there a potential for a. Duplex or triplex to masquerade as a townhouse? And skirt. The rules that we're creating and be end up being allowed throughout the entire city. How do you differentiate between a two or three unit townhouse from a. From a triplex or duplex?
I'm writing down a thought. I'm not ignoring the question.
I'm sure.
So townhouses, I assume are a single unit side by side. It's the form, often with parking underneath, but parking could be behind. A duplex could be two story, triplex again is probably no more than two story. The difference is the form control. So for example, if the planning commission and eventually the city council were to put a form control on duplex and triplex. So that they, as we've said, are compatible in size and scale with surrounding single family houses. Then presumably, even if it ended up looking like a townhouse, it would meet those same controls. I guess there's not a good way to distinguish a duplex could be stacked. It could be one unit over another unit, but no more than, again, the two stories. A triplex. I don't think you could meet a single family like scale if you were to do consecutive townhouses. So it gets to the whole form and scale question.
So I guess the follow up question there, do we need to be more specific about that size and scale and form? To differentiate between a townhouse, which would be allowed anywhere in the city versus duplex or triplex, we may be limited into where they could be located. Do we have?
Yeah, I think we were talking about form and scale for duplex and triplex.
The process of defining that we could, we would, we would know how those would be different from a town.
Right.
So I just Googled difference between duplex and townhouse and. And and it says that. A townhouse, the occupant of the unit also owns the exterior of the home as well as the land on which the property sits. On the other hand, the duplex is occupied by two different residents, but only one of them owns the property and the land on which it is located. So I don't know if that's the same. Definition that we have in Kenmore or not.
Yeah, I think that definition really speaks to ownership and I don't, I mean, you can rent townhouses. We have a large development where the townhouses are rented.
Do so great investment for a lot of people and then they rent them out.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that's quite. Quite the definition that we would have in terms of.
Well, if you could put a pin in this, Lori, and have us come back at some point to make sure we understand and we have clear. Rules on this that differentiate between. These two housing types.
So I'm kind of with Nathan that I think it's, you know, it's pretty clear the market is is working on. I'm a little unsure about the the proposal in your scenario to eliminate the special review process for small projects. I think I understand you're trying to get. Get get around that with really defining the size and scale. So it's, you know, appropriate to the neighborhood, but. I guess I'm not, I'm not necessarily sold that we should, again, as others have mentioned, kind of lessen review processes for. For this kind of project. So that's my thought on that one.
My major concern with the townhome development. Is the green stormwater infrastructure and having space for that. But that's a concern that I have about any development that happens in Kenmore right now, but since we're talking about. These specific types right now, I would just use it as an opportunity to say that I personally would would only feel comfortable recommending them if they came along with. Requirements for green stormwater infrastructure so that we can begin to tackle our stormwater problem.
Go ahead Nathan.
Lori, would it be possible to either get a statement or maybe invite Richard Sawyer to speak on that matter for? Any of these different types of developments?
In in terms of green stormwater?
Yeah, and how stormwater, surface water runoff, all that stuff relate to the development and the the current. Guidelines that we have and systems in place as a city to kind of handle those kinds of developments.
I think that would be very appropriate, maybe when we take up the surface water element, which is next, maybe at the end of next year, but maybe early the next. I think. I mean, it's certainly an interesting discussion and a valuable one, but I don't think. I think it would divert us from our mission here at this point when we're talking about.
Well, I. I was only suggesting that to answer Tracy's questions and concerns regarding these housing elements. And I wasn't sure if that would be appropriate to answer those questions.
Part of the reason I keep bringing it up is because. I'm sure I'm sounding like a broken record on it, but the part of the reason I bring it up is because stormwater pollution is a huge problem in our watershed. Huge problem. And and then the second reason is, is I know that it does require a certain. Lot size compared to the built structure. So like you do have to have, you can't just build a whole. Lot and have and do this green stormwater infrastructure, you know, that it does take up some space. So that's something that I'm always thinking about when I'm thinking about. Housing types and, you know, lot to building ratio and things like that.
Right. I think the townhouse rules exist and the stormwater rules exist. And I I don't know that we were thinking of changing the townhouse rules. The question was whether there were, should be an opportunity for a. Smaller project that wouldn't require public review and I think I'm hearing is that there's not interest. In that, which would mean that the townhouse rules as they currently exist would continue. And again, the surface water. Rules will be something that will take up at the time we do the surface water. There's a whole element, in fact. In the comprehensive plan about surface water that we'll be looking at. And let me know if I misheard on the townhouse. I thought I heard from. Four of you. Mike, Nathan, Mark. Or maybe I only heard from three of you.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay.
Dennis just raised his hand as well.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's, let's see, it's, it's a little after nine here. So Lori, what's your, what's your thought here? We have still have smaller houses on smaller lots and tiny home villages, correct, in this?
Well, tiny home villages, we were recommending that you not tackle that.
Right.
As part of this missing mill discussion. So really what's left is smaller lots, smaller houses on smaller lots. And so if we could get through that tonight, that would be ideal. I don't, I don't, I can't speak for the commission. If you're willing to continue, I'm willing to continue if you are.
Yeah.
Last item.
Maybe is everybody good with going another 10, 15 minutes or thereabouts? Anybody have a. Okay, I think we can do that. I just want to make one, a small point on the on the tiny home village and that I, you know, I, it doesn't sound like it is going to happen, but I certainly. Don't want to see it disappear from, you know, the sort of the public discourse. I know I think there's an informal North County King group, North King County group that's going to look at this. Postera on you mentioned this, I think, Arch, so I I just want to, for my at least personal perspective, I hope that that will still be something that will be. Discussed and considered, you know, on these sort of larger regional. Basically, even though we're not directly tackling it, so. My my personal thought.
I I think that we had envisioned that there would be some sort of a policy with an implementation measure associated with it so that the notion doesn't get lost because.
Okay.
Staff certainly feels like it's important.
Great. Okay, good. Thank you. So, okay, why don't we go to smaller homes, houses on.
Going to share my screen again and then you'll tell me to stop sharing. When you're ready to discuss. This is good practice for me. See Dwight didn't have to step in.
Yeah.
Okay, so this early discussion was talking about allowing smaller minimum lot sizes. In in single family zones through the plating process. Plating process is where you divide property into other lots. And it always is a public process, so there's always public comment. Sometimes the city council does the approval. Depending on how many lots are being considered and you all were concerned that the community survey had expressed concern about this and that the design and scale of the houses was critical. So staff's scenario would be that there would be no minimum lot size applied. Uh so staff's scenario would be that there would be no minimum lot size applied. But that the house size would be determined relative to lot size. So if you have a small lot, you have a smaller house. Uh and and height two would probably be less than the thirty five foot current height limit. Uh tree preservation would be a precondition so that you couldn't even apply for this type of a plat. Unless you are doing extra tree preservation. Um it should be near uh services or transit and that that should be in an area where there's sidewalk infrastructure. And that low impact development would be a condition for this type of a project. So again, this would be a very specific project approved through a plat. Tiny, I shouldn't say tiny houses, because we've discussed that in a different context, but smaller houses on a smaller lot. So you couldn't get a smaller lot and then be build a great big house like so many of the new houses. Uh we see, it would be a smaller house. So the question here really is whether the commission wants to pursue this scenario. If so, then we would talk about, come back on November second with some ideas for what uh development standards. Might look like. So ready for your input.
Okay, maybe we'll go back to the, go back to the smiling faces again, please, Lori.
Oh, see, I didn't do it.
Okay, okay. Uh let's see, Nathan and Dwight, go ahead.
Just to, I I think something to cover, good to cover right off the bat. Lori, could you please remind us um or tell us what the current process is for plats and what the current policies are around the city? Um because I noticed says, it says smaller and so are their restrictions or the current minimum lot lot sizes. Wha- what are the current conditions that the city has right now?
So so currently, if you want to divide property, there are two processes you can go to through. One is called a short plat. That's when you're dividing something into nine lots or less. The other is called a full subdivision or a long plat, and that's when you're dividing into more than nine lots. So those are the two processes along, they follow along in the same way initially. So there's an open public comment period. Uh the lots have to meet the the zone. For the most part, have to meet the current zoning rules. There are some provisions in certain areas related to critical areas where you can average lots. But typically, uh they have to meet a minimum lot size and they have to meet standards, they have to provide access. Et cetera, utilities, the whole thing. Uh and then uh it's approved uh usually by the development services director. And then for, then there's a second round after everything's built and it's all been looked at. And then the development director can approve the final short plat, but the city council actually appli- approves the final long plat. So that goes to the city council. At that point, it's pretty um wrote because. The preliminary was approved and the final is because everything's been installed. So it'd be kind of hard for the city council to say, oh no, now we don't want to approve it. When all the roads and everything have been installed. But in both cases, there's public comment and um notification of. The proposed development.
And and so are there any restrictions on that or or what would differentiate these smaller lot? For these plats um and that process from what is currently um allowed?
The conditions would be different. So in in the short plat rules. Uh and plating rules, which are in title seventeen of the municipal code, there are standards. You have to have. Water, you have to have sewer, you have to access, you have to uh have proximity to schools. There's a list of conditions. In this particular case, we would envision develop. Envision developing a set of additional approval criteria. Again, how much smaller the houses would have to be. Uh that tree preservation would have to be exemplary. That uh uh low impact development would have to be used. So it would be its own subsection in the plating rules. That would uh provide the criteria by which the project would be measured.
So in addition, not something completely separate or another set of criteria for plat?
It would be in addition to all the regular rules about access and water and sewer and et cetera.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
Uh I think Dwight, Dwight, go ahead and then Tracy.
Well, first of all, I I'm just not. Exactly exuberant about our city's uh tree preservation. Um ordinances or their enforcement. And so that for me has, that's a hurdle that has to happen. Uh and 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 to do any of this type of increased density. So that goes for all of the issues. Um the minimum lot size is. I I think the really what we're talking about, you sort of said this, but it's about lot coverage. And that would of course include any impervious surface. Of course, we all know it affects our stormwater, affects our the environment. Related to the the property and its surroundings, all of those things. And that would have to be really spelled out. Um that for me to move ahead uh on something to to endorse this type of thing. So um lot size and the house size all have to do with coverage. And um. I'm not so. Concerned about existing sidewalk infrastructure. I think it depends on the nature of the. Um the neighborhood of where it's going in and that it's consistent with that neighborhood. I and for, I have walking up here, all of a sudden, there's in front of this house, there are sidewalks. And then you walk everywhere else in the street and there's no sidewalks. And I I I guess in the middle of nowhere, why are we doing that? I think it costs money that we don't have to extract out of these folks. I'd rather have money extracted out of them for the environment and not to create new sidewalks. Where there is no need for them. So that's um. I think that's uh very important and um but those are my my initial concerns about. Uh smaller houses on smaller lots. I'm not really against that as long as the protections are there. And we start addressing our environmental concerns as a whole, because this issue is an example. Of the problems that we have overall in this city about protecting our environment. Thank you very much.
Okay, Trace, Tracy and then Mike, go ahead.
I am a big plus one to everything that Dwight just said. And maybe it's, yeah, I I'm just gonna leave it at that. I do, and I have a question. Um. So it sounds like we could put stricter environmental protections on smaller lot sized developments. In a way that we couldn't with townhomes. Can you connect the dots for me, please? Is that because townhomes already exist as a ti- type? I'm a little fuzzy on this.
Yeah, I don't think we would be changing the critical area rules. No, I we would not um be doing that. I think what we could do is with new rules for smaller lots. That we could talk about low impact development as a condition, a precondition. The townhome rules are set, you're right, and that's why we weren't envisioning changing those. But with this new housing type, we could add a new uh criterion.
Okay, so when I said environmental protection, I wasn't just speaking to critical areas as they're defined in the RCWs. I was talking also that, but also these tree canopy issues. And uh low impact development, green stormwater infrastructure things. It sounds like we can insert those things in the smaller lot size. Because it's a diff- I I'm.
It's a new housing type, right? We're not uh we're not revisiting the existing townhome standards.
Okay, that that makes sense and and doesn't make sense, but it makes sense, so I I will accept that. For now. Um I'm sorry, I'm feeling a little punchy, but I'm gonna I'm gonna stick with you all because this is important. Um I I also, it's so interesting Dwight that you brought up psych box because the only note I made about this for myself. When I wasn't feeling a little bit punchy, like I wasn't, was like several hours ago. Was smaller houses on smaller lots, sidewalks. I have questions about this. And I I I think it is partly like what Dwight. I know it sounds funny now, but I was serious about it then and I'm still serious about it now. I know that sidewalks are really important infrastructure for public safety and, you know, hitting our target zero goals. Like we want people to be able to move safely in our environments. It's more important for me to, for people to be able to move safely, for example. I mean, cars need to move safely, but. We need to prioritize people. So sidewalks from that perspective make a lot of sense. Um but. I wonder if there are ways we could be creative about how we think about pedestrian safety, you know, that don't necessarily involve sidewalks. I guess that was my question. Um yeah, and that may be outside the scope of this discussion, but that's what my. Higher self would would love to have a conversation about. And also I'm bringing this up because I I, is it okay to call him out? Is it okay to call out um our city manager? Can I, can I? In a city council meeting, he and I I'm the co-. I remember him saying, I wish I could remember the exact meeting, but he was, I think it was in a discussion with council about trees. He was talking about how council, you said that sidewalks were important to you. And you said in this development, the sidewalks had to go all, it was like a cul-de-sac or development or something. And you said that the sidewalks had to go all the way around and the sidewalks had to be a certain width and. Well, that just meant that more trees had to be cut down because that's what you said you wanted. So I I just wonder, and and he made it sound like it didn't have to be that way. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can think about. The need for sidewalks and pedestrian safety, but that it doesn't have to be so um rigid. So that we're creating other problems for ourselves by like trying to institute this thing that it seems to make like people safe sidewalks. But then it's creating other problems and maybe not in reality keeping people safe. That's, I think that's what I'm trying to say. Does that make sense?
It 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 makes sense. It's, I think what you, we're kind of veering off here into a much broader discussion on the need. The need or not need for sidewalks.
Yeah.
I think if we want to try and tie it back to the small lot discussion, I think what you're saying is, is there a way? Or could the, could there be exceptions made for this type of development to exclude sidewalks in lieu of providing something else? Whether it's more trees or something or something or something. I mean, if we can limit it in that way to this discussion, but I I don't think this is the right time to have a discussion about. Sidewalks and where and all that.
Yeah, in general, I understand that, but i- i- it does, it's relevant though, because sidewalks were called out specifically in the proposal. And the recommendation like that, you know, that that there would be sidewalks installed.
Well, you know, you bring up another, I know I'm putting in here, but I I I just gotta say this. You know, all of the stuff we're talking about tonight has to do with certain elements. Whether you call it critical areas, or you talk about tree preservation or all that kind of stuff. And to say that we cannot look at that or ask the city council and saying, you know, we've been reviewing this. This is a mess. And that if one of us, either they, which they have already said publicly. Uh several members, not a, they haven't taken a motion on this. But says that they need to revisit these issues because it's out of control. And and I think we need to revisit the whole thing so that we get it in control. So we can do the right thing in developing uh more affordable housing and other opportunities for this community. So I I think that we as a planning commission have an obligation to speak to our council to say. This needs to be relooked at because we're, it's a mess. And we're trying to help. Here, but we're we're getting, you know, we're in an area that's, it's not responsive to our needs.
I I know lots of people are gonna wanna say, I just, Dwight, I agree with you. And it does make it very hard to make recommendations when we feel like you can't make a recommendation about everything that feels important. And I understand the reasons why, but I I do, I have a lot of sympathy for that position.
Mike, go ahead. Um you had your.
I'm not gonna talk about trees. So here's what I think about trees. Uh I like, and I think tree preservation on these small lots is very important. One of the loopholes that I've have actually experienced in my own neighborhood. Is rules that say, okay, you can take down the tree if you mitigate it in some way. And mitigation is you agree to pay to have a tree planted in China. Something uh that's not here and doesn't do anything to restore or uh maintain uh the tree canopy in the community. If we can build something here related to small uh house. Uh tree preservation, it would be that they, if they were going to pick down a tree, they had to replace the tree on the property. They can make a choice about where it was, but it can't be in China. Uh the other thing that that uh came to my mind is, at one point, does a small. A lot, small house development cross over into being a cottage development? Obviously, it's a, it's a matter of size, but it's, I think we need to be able to define that somehow. Uh in our small house development to differentiate it from a a cottage development. Is it? We get into design criteria that might that deal with it, but if we're getting to a sub plating uh uh situation here. I could see a situation where we could end up with six small houses. And you're really, what you're doing is you're building a cottage development uh and maybe not. And spreading some of the uh the design and development criteria that we would, we would put into a cottage development.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Um so getting back to the the big question that we first started this conversation on is, should we uh? Include or or look at smaller lot sizes and and smaller house sizes for the plating process? And I I would agree with that. I think if it's in addition to the current plotting prep. Pla- plat process, sorry, if it's in addition to the current plating process. I think that there's a lot of benefit there and it would make more affordable housing, not affordable housing, but more affordable in relative terms. Um and and it's, it's, I can only see positives in terms of achieving our goals as a commission. In comparison to the the standard that's already there, the norm, you know, if 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 a builder is going to build a a plat already. If those are smaller houses, then I mean, I think there's, there's less of an impact there and I think there's a lot of benefit there. Um so I I would agree with that. That's my position, Lori. Um in terms of the other little details here, I'm I'm on board for tree preservation. But I do have to put my foot down and say that I'm very strongly supportive of sidewalks and pedestrian safety. Um you know, it the the idea came up, oh, what if we mitigate it? Um what if there's another idea? Uh well, I I, we don't have another idea right now. And until we have that idea, I think pedestrian safety is very critical. Um I don't know if many of you remember, but that was the position that I I proposed. Or that that was my my entire reason why I got on the commission in the first place was pedestrian safety. And I'm still going to advocate for that, um because it's very critical that we protect, protect pedestrians and bicyclists. And I think that does uh tie in in alignment with um the the city council's uh target zero policy. And so I I don't think we should mess with that. You know, I, there's talk about that. I think we should leave that. I think that's good. There's a lot of value there. And and if that's something that comes into question later, I'm I'm willing to have a strong discussion about that. But those are my positions and um I'm I'm interested to hear what others have to say.
Go ahead, Sienna.
Um I I think the. The description or the specifications are are fine. Um I agree with Nathan about the sidewalks. I agree with the other folks about tree preservation and I I think that we can uh. Discuss kind of the finer points as we get more into this, but in general, I think that. Um, I'm in favor of the smaller houses on smaller lots and think that's headed in the right direction. And could use some refining when we refine all of the other details.
I'll second Suzanne's point and I do wanna, you know, underscore Nathan's point about sidewalk infrastructure, yeah, I think that's hugely important in our community. So Dennis, anybody else want to share any thoughts on this? Any more thoughts, I should say?
I will say, since I'm one of the people who brought up the sidewalk issue, just I'm not minimizing pedestrian safety at all. I'm not making light of that. Target zero is incredibly important, there was a bicyclist killed on sixty first, I pass by the cross that sits at that intersection every day. It's, it's a serious issue. To say though, that there are no other solutions, possible solutions, I feel like closes us off. To the possibilities that do exist that might not be strictly sidewalks, Seattle has started closing certain streets. So that neighborhoods have opportunities to use the space that we usually dedicate to cars. For pedestrians and for kids to, you know, recreate in, I think that's one possibility. One-way streets, taking away a street from, I'm like talking about ideas that take away from cars and I know we're not having a sidewalk discussion. But I do feel like we should consider what the alternatives are before we dedicate ourselves to building more impervious surfaces. In our watershed. And again, I'm not minimizing pedestrian safety at all, I have a young child, we go on sidewalk, it's very important to me that we stay safe. But I would like to have a discussion, a robust discussion about, you know, what exactly that means.
Thanks Tracy. So anything more on this, on this topic, Laura, do you have enough on that specific topic to to move forward?
I do, and in fact, I, as far as I'm concerned. We've completed the discussion with one exception and I'm so sorry to go back and ask you this question. But it's the last one about duplexes and triplexes, which is that there are existing duplexes and triplexes. In Kenmore, they would be considered non-conformances, so there are limitations on how they can remodel. And and add a porch or whatever it is they wanna do. And so one of the questions, if you're able to answer it tonight would be great. Could we make those conforming structures so that they would no longer be non-conformances? The existing duplexes and triplexes.
Laurie, could you, could you tell us how those came about? Were there no rules in effect at that point?
Well, they weren't City of Kenmore rules, the big area that I know of that's duplexes was built before Kenmore was ever incorporated. They probably were permitted in the county.
Is that something we want to tackle tonight? Do we feel like we can do that? Effectively, or do we want to defer that for another meeting? Go ahead, White.
Well, certainly, in fairness to. These property owners that if they existed. At the time of incorporation of Kenmore, then they should be grandfathered. Because that's the, I feel that's the right thing to do. Sidewalk or no sidewalk, so just kidding Nathan, okay, just kidding. But I'm I'm with you Nathan about safety and and that's part of the sidewalk. It's just interesting seeing them kinda scattered through the city. But I I really, the first step is to say that if they existed at the time of incorporation. Then they should be grandfathered or grandmothered into. What, uh, being conforming, so that's the first step, I think.
Uh, I would like to second Dwight's comment, I I support that idea if they were. In existence before incorporation and complied with the rules then, that they should have the opportunity to be grandfathered. My my only comment is I think it would be beneficial for the city, at least to have record. That they conform to. Current standards and codes, just making sure that they meet all the safety requirements that the city now. Has for those those properties. But I think if if they check all that that off, then there's, there's no reason why it shouldn't be grandfathered.
I dito everything Nathan just said, special emphasis on at the time that they were constructed. That they were compliant with existing rules.
I'm with that too, any others? All right, looks like you have a. Have a clear direction on that one, Laurie. All right, well, anything more on on missing middle for tonight, Laurie or Debbie?
Not on missing middle, I have one, one thing just to. To chat about is that at the end of this year, there are four planning commission terms, which would be expiring. Council direction on Monday night was to. Advertise for applicants who are interested in serving on the planning commission. And so that advertisement would go, we're trying to get that live tomorrow. And then if there are commissioners whose term ends at this year are interested in serving another year. They would also need to apply, so this is the same process that we went through last year. For reappointment of new commissioners, so I just wanted to kind of. Let you know that this this was was coming and that for those terms who are expiring, if you are interested in serving another term, you would need to submit sort of. A letter of interest.
Thanks for letting us, go go ahead, White.
Well, and and that, thank you for bringing that up, Debbie. The other deal is that there, did you say that they're extending it from three to four years is the intention?
Yes, so the state law says planning commission terms are between four and six years. And the direction from the council was to make it a four-year term, so there will be an ordinance brought forward. In November to change the planning commission terms from three to four and that would probably start with new, the new planning commission terms.
So what I was going to say related to that and they're going to. Establish another ordinance which will have a direct effect on those of us. That have a term continuing and anyone that's new. Is if you have some personal viewpoints on how the that should happen and the organization of all of that. I highly recommend that you talk to the council members and express your opinions. And because now's the time, because once they get into this ordinance, you know, the. The the meat. Uh, making time, it's a little harder to get into the council members' agenda, shall we say. So I just wanted to put put that forward.
I think you, thank you for letting us know, Debbie, we be, you'll be sharing that information via email to for us, is that, is that the case or or?
I can, when when it goes live, I will share the the link, I can show it with the whole planning commission. But it's more relevant to those commission, for commissioners whose terms are expiring. If they wish to serve another term. In terms of the ordinance for extending a term from three to four years, that was council direction to bring an ordinance back. To change the municipal code for the planning commission requirements to extend the term from three to four.
All right, thank you, any other business for tonight? All right, with that, thank you, everybody, appreciate your sticking past our our usual time, we've got some good work done, so thanks for that. We'll see everybody on November fourth, we are adjourned.
Uh, Mark, oh no, Mark's not here, wow.